It is finally six o'clock, according to the clock on the wall. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Jackson?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Starnes?
Here.
Counselor Cables?
Here.
Counselor Stritchett?
Here.
Counselor Boone?
Clearing a quorum present, I call this public hearing to order. First matter, first hearing this evening is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Do we have anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Do we have anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing on this matter closed. We will move to our second public hearing on an ordinance to repeal and replace Article III, Board of Zoning Adjustment of the City of Prattville Zoning Ordinance. Is anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing on this matter closed, and we will move into our next meeting. As you are able, will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance in our invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? Father, in the midst of our personal agendas, we pause to thank you for the gift of this day and for your gifts of life, health, strength, and the safety of our community during this last storm. Our sympathy is extended to those that have lost loved ones in recent days, and we are mindful of those that are daily wrestling with the challenging issues of life. We ask for your hand of comfort, your gift of peace, to be with all affected. We pray for all citizens that are providing service to their fellow man, whether local or abroad, whether military, civilian, or public service. We pray for their efforts to be successful and at the end of their duty for their safe return to their family. We pray for the health and healing of nations in conflict, for our country, our state and its leadership, for our community, and for all of those that have an influence on history. Tonight, as we conduct the business of our city, we ask that our thoughts and actions be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Jackson?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Starnes?
Here.
Counselor Cables?
Here.
Counselor Stritchett?
Here.
Counselor Boone?
Clearing a quorum present, I call the meeting to order. The character trait of the month is flexibility, willingness to change plans or ideas without getting upset. This time, the chair will call for the approval of minutes of the public hearing and the city council meeting held June the 6th, 2017. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the adoption of the minutes signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this motion is carried. At this time, we will entertain comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Is anyone present that would like to speak? Mr. Mayor, your opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thompson, also Officer Hardit and Corporal Abete, you guys would come forward. We have a new hire and a new promotion. So, I'd like to introduce everybody, Corporal Abete, and I appreciate all your hard work, and I believe, is this your son?
[Laughter]
Okay. I didn't realize you guys were going to come at the same time. So, congratulations on everything that you have done for the city, and I know you've deserved that promotion there, being the corporal, and so, good work, good luck, and look forward to the future.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, anything?
Good work, Corporal.
Okay. Any comments to the council? Okay. Then our new hire, new officer would be Hardit. So, don't have any word to say.
So, thank you, sir.
Family, with the work family, and would you like to speak? Okay, now here's your family. A lot larger than... Hopefully, you can move up the ranks real quickly so you'll be able to have enough to feed and clothe your family there. Congratulations, glad that you're here. Would you like to speak with the council here briefly? Okay. Last, last. [Laughter] You say, "May we when he turns the microphone over?"
I'd just like to say thank you all for the opportunity, and I'm glad to be here.
All right.
Thank you.
If I might, would you like 30 seconds at the microphone?
Okay. Well, we do appreciate, glad you guys are here. Thank you for sharing him with us, and wish you Godspeed. Thank you. Now, by this time, we all know about the events that happened the week before last. It was one of our very own, was saved by training provided by many, many counselors before, and proper, modern equipment funded by many, many councils. Great leadership by the ones in charge today of that department. I want to thank this council for continuing that funding. And we had the sun come up in a glorious way the following day after that event a week and a half or so ago, and his family and his community are proud that he is still able to work and perform in his duties in the way that he's been trained and served the city of Prattville very well. But, you know, recently, we experienced a significant weather event over the weekend. We fared the seven-plus inches of rain very well thanks to the efforts of the public works and engineering. I want to also thank Public Safety for their hard work during the weather event. It was a true team effort by city forces for all that we should all be very, very thankful for. As we all know, it's raining today, and more is on the way. Governor Ivey has issued a statewide state of emergency in preparation for severe weather, which went into effect at 10:00 a.m. today. But on a lighter note, the sun did come out, the rain did stay away, as we kicked off our Creek Walk Concert Series for Summer 2017 last Tuesday night to a great crowd. The next one is coming Tuesday. Bama Breeze will perform. The Prattville Pops will hold their patriotic concert on July the 2nd at 6:30 p.m. at the Pratt Park Amphitheater, and I hope to see everyone there. You know, we all know that the 4th of July is the celebrated birthday of our nation, and because of that, our clean city professionals want our Prattville to look as beautiful as it is. Monday, they will collect Monday's garbage and Mondays and Tuesdays' yard trash routes. On Wednesday, they will collect Tuesday and Wednesday's garbage and yard trash routes. Clean City Charlie, our green little truck, if anybody's seen it around, green and yellow, has been moving around the city promoting this scheduling change. We hope the word has gotten out to our citizens. You know, the 4th of July has been traditionally a great big day here in the city of Prattville, since Prattville is such a patriotic community. Our parade will start at 9:00 a.m., Lions Club BBQ at 10:00, Cardboard Boat Race at 10:00 a.m., and fireworks at dark with the stadium opening at 6:00. Please check our website for more information on that. Talking about our website, if I might, at this time, have Teresa Lee come up. If I could continue the point of privilege, but she started with the city back in 2004 as the webmaster took on Dool Rose as a web and executive assistant. She's helped each and every one of us in so many different ways, formed the community, served the community, is dedicated to the community. She is now going to serve us at a state level. I want to wish her Godspeed and grace. So, without further ado, I'd like to give you this Partnership of Prattville medallion and wish you good will.
Carrying right on along, I'd like to request that council reinstate the webmaster position into our budgeting as it is not being filled at this time, but in the near future, we will need to have that filled just as quickly as possible. Mr. President, I send my report. Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any comments or questions of the mayor? Thank you. Thank you. I, too, on behalf of the council, express appreciation for your years of service, Teresa, for the citizens of Prattville, and for your assistance to the members of the council. We wish you happiness and success in your new job on Capitol Hill. At this time, we will move into special reports, our council reports on special committees. Counselor Jackson?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Cables?
No, sir.
Counselor Stritchett?
Counselor.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
Thank you. This time, we'll move to a report from our finance director.
Everyone should have a packet in front of them. First page in the packet's the general fund revenue report, which is going to have all revenues for the general fund other than debt proceeds, and we have received $25,61,023 year-to-date through May, and this is up 0.72% year-to-date when compared to the same period in the prior year. On the next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we're up very slightly at 0.44% for the month over the previous May. The next three pages in your packet show the general fund expenses for the month broken down by department, and we are currently two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year, and we have spent 56.8% of our budgeted expenditures for the year. So, we are tracking very well on the expense side in the general fund. Next page is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement, and the wastewater fund had a net loss of $44,174 for the month of May, and this was primarily due to revenues being down a bit this month from the average, and we also had some engineering expenses that totaled about $116,000 that were related to the plant expansion project that were a little out of the norm. But expenses overall continue to come in well under budget. Next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. The sanitation fund reported a net loss of $33,786 for the month of May. This was due primarily to some higher tipping fee expenses this month. We also purchased one load of garbage cans that kind of rounded out a order from the previous month. Expenses overall are right in line with the budget for this point in the year. They are sitting at 67.73% of the budgeted expenses. Next page in the packet is the judicial special revenue fund income statement, and this fund reported a net loss of $708 for May, but the expenses continue to track well Next page in the packet is the bank balances report, and the total of all bank balances citywide was $25,442,397 at the end of the month. Last page in the packet is the accounts payable and debt balances report. The AP and debt balance at the end of May was $38,267,611.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Oakley? Thank you very much. Tonight, we have an opportunity to create a consent agenda, which would include Resolution Number One to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Resolution Number Two to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance, order their abatement, and set a public hearing per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Resolution Number Three to reappoint David Schultz to the Commercial Development Authority. Resolution Number Four to reappoint Kenneth B. Burton to the Commercial Development Authority. Resolution Number Five to terminate a lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of South Central Alabama Incorporated. Resolution Number Six to authorize the city attorney to file suit against Prattville Development Group, LLC. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to place these items on a consent agenda. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? This time, I ask for a vote. All those in favor of placing these items on the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, we now have a consent agenda before us. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion concerning the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and the consent agenda is adopted. We will now move into our regular agenda. First item is an ordinance to repeal and replace Article III, Board of Zoning Adjustment of the City of Prattville Zoning Ordinance. This matter was held from our May 16th meeting, 2017. Is there any further discussion concerning this ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, the ordinance is adopted. Resolution Number Two to amend the fiscal year 2017 budget and to award bid number 17-009 to David Bulger, Incorporated, for Woodvale Drainage Canal Restoration Project at a cost of $321,115. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville has identified a need to restore the Woodvale Drainage Canal, and whereas the engineering department had specifications drafted for said project, and whereas six sealed bids were received, opened, and read on June 13th, 2017, at 10:00 a.m., and David Bulger, Incorporated, was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $321,115. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby amends the fiscal year 2017 budget as follows. Increase loan proceeds, $463,000. Increase capital projects fund, Woodvale Drainage Canal Project, $321,115. Increase accounts receivable loan proceeds, $141,885. Be it further resolved that bid number 017-009 is hereby awarded to David Bulger, Incorporated, in the amount of $321,115 for the Woodvale Drainage Canal Restoration Project, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2017 budget line item capital projects fund slash Woodvale Drainage Canal Project. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Three to amend the FY 2017 budget and to ratify and affirm and release funds for professional services provided by Larry East Speaks and Associates, Incorporated, for the Matt Gray Park Improvement Project Phases One and Two for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $31,087. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Parks and Recreation Department has identified a need for additions and improvements to Matt Gray Park, and whereas Larry Speaks and Associates, Incorporated, provided professional services for phases one and two of said project, and whereas said services were provided at a cost not to exceed $31,087, and whereas Section 41-16-51A3 Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended, allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill to be led without competitive bidding. Now therefore, be it resolved that fiscal year 2017 lodging fee reserves is hereby decreased by $31,087, and fiscal year 2017 budget line item capital projects fund slash Matt Gray Park Improvements is hereby increased by $31,087. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby ratify and affirm the release of funds for professional services provided by Larry East Speaks and Associates, Incorporated, for the Matt Gray Park Improvement Project Phases One and Two at a cost not to exceed $31,087, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 budget line item capital projects fund slash Matt Gray Park Improvements. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Four to amend the FY 2017 budget and to release funds for the purchase of furniture and a filing system for the City Hall renovation project Phase One from Alabama Correctional Industries at a cost not to exceed $64,100. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Prattville has identified a need to renovate City Hall due to the relocation departments, and whereas Phase One of said renovation project shall include the judicial and city clerk departments and a reception area in City Hall. Facial project includes a need for filing system for departments and classroom, conference room. And whereas Alabama Correctional Industries has the ability to design and build said furniture and filing system at a cost not to exceed $64,100. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, by amends the fiscal year, follows: Decrease community initiative slash LPTA, $64,100. Increase city clerk slash capital outlay, $5,458. Operating supplies, $9,200. Operating supplies, $3,857. By the city council of City of Prattville, hereby authorizing, approved to be paid.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Five to amend the FY 2017 budget due to reclassification of positions in the facilities maintenance division of public works at a cost not to exceed $5,885. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the Human Resources Department has identified a need to reclassify positions in the facilities maintenance division of public works, and whereas said reclassification shall require amendments to the fiscal year 2017 budget. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the following fiscal year 2017 budget line items are hereby amended as follows. Increase facilities maintenance slash salaries and wages, $5,038. Increase facilities maintenance slash FICA, $386. Increase facilities maintenance slash retirement, $461. And decrease general fund reserves, $5,885. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Six to amend the FY 2017 budget and to ratify and affirm the purchase of one 2017 Bobcat 3400 XL from Bobcat of Montgomery for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $14,046. Counselor Stable, Starnes, will you read this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the council approved the purchase of a 2017 Bobcat 3400 XL in Resolution Book 2016 A114, and whereas said equipment was stolen on 5/15/2017 has been recovered, and whereas a portion of the replacement cost for said equipment is reimbursable through the city's insurance, and whereas said replacement equipment is available from Bobcat of Montgomery at a not cost not to exceed $14,046. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that FY 2017 budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase insurance proceeds, $10,725. Increase in Parks and Recreation damage and claims, $3,321. Increase in Parks and Recreation slash capital outlay, $14,046. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby ratifies and affirms the purchase of one 2017 Bobcat 3400 XL from Bobcat of Montgomery at a cost not to exceed $14,046. Be it further resolved that the funds in the amount of $14,046 are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 line item Parks and Recreation Department slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution?
Ms. Cook, how old was the one that was stolen? Just curious. 2015? And where was it? Where did it? All right, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor of adoption of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Seven to amend the FY 2017 budget and to ratify and affirm the purchase of one 2017 Toro Z Master 25-horsepower Kubota mower with the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative from Prattville Outdoors for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $16,198. Counselor Stritchett, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the council approved the purchase of a 2017 Toro Z Master 25-horsepower Kubota mower in Resolution Book 2017, page 055, and whereas said mower was stolen on 5/15, has not been recovered, and whereas the portion of the replacement cost for said equipment is reimbursable through the city's insurance, and whereas said replacement mower is available through the National IPA Contract 9281 from Prattville Outdoors at a cost not to exceed Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that FY 2017 budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase insurance proceeds, $16,198. Increase Parks and Recreation capital outlay, $16,198. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby ratifies and affirms the purchase of one 2017 Toro Z Master 25-horsepower Kubota mower through National IPA Contract 9281 from Prattville Outdoors at a cost not to exceed $16,198. Be it further resolved that the funds in the amount of $16,198 are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2017 line item Parks and Recreation Department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, are there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Eight to authorize the release of funds to purchase one vehicle from the state contract T191L for the police department at a total cost not to exceed $31,816 to be paid with federal drug proceeds. Counselor Starnes, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one vehicle for the city of Prattville Police Department, and whereas said vehicle is available through state contract T191L...
and whereas said vehicle is available through state contract T one nine one L at a cost not to exceed thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, and whereas said vehicle shall be paid for with federal drug proceeds. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for said vehicle are hereby authorized and approved, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from federal drug proceeds account sixty-seven zero one dash eleven dash six zero four. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number nine, to release funds for the purchase of one Toro Grandstand twenty-five horsepower sixty-inch commercial mower with attachments through the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative from Prattville Outdoors for the Public Works Department Urban Management at a cost not to exceed eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one Toro Grandstand twenty-five horsepower sixty-inch commercial mower with attachments in the Public Works Department slash Urban Management, and whereas said equipment is available through the National IPA Purchasing Co-op Contract number nine two eight one from Prattville Outdoors at a cost not to exceed eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and whereas said equipment is a budgeted expense for the department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Prattville Outdoors, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget line item Urban Management Department slash Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number ten, to amend the FY two thousand and seventeen budget and to release funds for the purchase of two additional two thousand and seventeen police interceptor SUV vehicles through bid number zero one six dash zero zero six from Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Counselor Sarnes, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for two additional police interceptor SUV vehicles, and whereas bid number sixteen dash six was led for one or more two thousand and sixteen or newer police interceptor SUV vehicles, and Long Lewis of River Region Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars per vehicle, whereas bid number sixteen dash six was originally awarded by the City Council in Resolution Book two thousand and sixteen, page seventy-seven, on April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and whereas the cost per vehicle awarded in bid number sixteen dash six shall be honored by Long Lewis of River Region Incorporated through June two thousand and seventeen. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the following FY two thousand and seventeen budget line items are amended. Decrease Police Department slash Fuel and Oil thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Decrease Police Department slash Equipment Maintenance twenty-five thousand. Increase Police Department slash Capital Outlay fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Long Lewis of River Region Incorporated, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget line item Police Department slash Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number eleven, to release funds for the purchase of one Zuzu Crewcab NP NRP dash HD with nineteen-foot wheelroll open landscaper body truck through the NJPA Purchasing Cooperative from Truck Works for the Public Works Department Urban Management at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one landscape body truck in the Public Works Department Urban Management, and whereas said truck is available through the NJPA Purchasing Co-op Contract number one oh two eight one one from Truck Works at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, and whereas said truck is a budgeted expense for the department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars for the purchase of said truck are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Truck Works, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget line item Urban Management Department slash Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number twelve, to release funds for the purchase of one Toro Z Master twenty-five horsepower Kubota mower with the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative from Prattville Outdoors for the Fire Department at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Counselor Stritchett, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one Toro Z Master twenty-five horsepower Kubota mower in the Fire Department, and whereas the said equipment is available through the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract number nine two eight one from Prattville Outdoors at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, and whereas said equipment is a budgeted expense for the Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Prattville Outdoors, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY two thousand and seventeen budget line item Fire Department Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by the same like sign, this resolution is approved. This concludes our agenda as printed. At this time, we will move forward into the area of comments from persons present.
John Lee Finnegan, two-eleven, Dear Trace. I'd like to continue on my comments that I was making on the June sixth agenda, and I did not get to finish, so it's that last paragraph, and I don't know if that would be in the June sixth, attached to the June sixth meeting, so I'm going to give this last paragraph to be attached to it. The last paragraph was, "The High Point Shopping Center debacle should have shown us the future is uncertain, and cautious and prudent spending is still necessary. Prattville taxpayers deserve the courtesy of being provided with comprehensive information well at advance of meetings like this one. This allows them to present their comments with clarity and possible provide details that might not have been known or considered." Thank you. And I have... Also with Teresa Lee leaving and the great job that she did with the website and especially the council meetings, I've heard through the grapevine, and I don't know if it's true, and I talked with the mayor about it regarding that maybe the council meetings would not be videotaped, or they might, I don't know, and that is up in the air, but I would like you to consider before a webmaster is hired that maybe to have a temporary contract with, I don't know if BWS does it or something, and have someone that could at least do those. And it's not so much the agenda, because with the draft, we see all the ordinances and the resolutions, but it's the comments and the special recognition of people and things like that that I think would be very important to make sure that they have that on tape. So I'd like you to make that consideration, because I don't know how long it'll be before we get a webmaster. And plus, just, I know I get a heck of a lot of information from the city's website. I mean, it's just full of, you know, the great things that are going on, and of course, the meetings that I attend and the, you know, the bid openings and et cetera, and I think people need to have that available. So I do highly recommend that. And one more, I always cross the Toga Creek Bridge, and I know we've discussed this before many years, but is there any consideration being given to a crosswalk right there? It's very frightening, and we're getting more and more people using the creek walk. When we have special events, they park over here. Just, I don't know if it can, it can be handled, but I really, really think that a crosswalk should be considered. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? At this time, we'll move into closing comments. Oh, excuse me.
My name is Isaac Crawford, and I attend Spring Hill AM Design, and just to address some issues dealing with the, that community and the Boys and Girls Club that's in our community over there. I guess to try to figure out what to do with it, where to go with it. I'm also involved with the Ucan mentoring program that takes place here in our county. We reach out to the schools, work with the youth in the schools, as well as providing conflict resolution classes, tutoring, and things of that nature. Our church as well provides tutoring, mentoring, and we've also launched a fitness program that I think will be beneficial not only just for our church community, but for that Spring Hill community as well. The building, the Boys and Girls Club is just sitting there, and I do believe that if we have an opportunity to develop a program that will be beneficial for, not just for the community, but also for the City of Prattville, I think it would be beneficial for everybody that's involved with that. And we have a curriculum, it's like a setup for the mentoring programs as well, so to be able to have a facility that we could utilize besides just going into the schools, looking at a before and after school program with the other programs that are in the area, but there's nothing in that area that will be able to help the community. So if we're able to talk about those, that information and come to some type of agreement, I think it would be beneficial.
Thank you very much. Any other comments to the council?
Good evening. My comment actually comes somewhat on the line of the gentleman that just passed was, now that the situation with the former Boys and Girls Club has been resolved, what is the next point? I myself currently own a child development center here in Prattville, and we're up on Duster Road in a small building, and have been in conversation with the mayor as well as Councilman Jackson about that location in Spring Hill, as to what was the next step and what's the next move, or even what could we do. At one point, we had conversation with the bank and had an agreement, but because everything was tied up legally, we couldn't do anything until it is now resolved. So I too likewise have a great concern for our community, especially our youth, as to what direction they're going in. I don't have to tell you what Montgomery looks like. I do know we don't want our kids in Prattville to get in that position. So I think we do a great job in the City of Prattville with our youth, but I also think we need to have more program that meets the need of our low-income kids. I know we have the city program as well as the YMCA's and other daycares, but do we have anything where those kids that cannot afford those programs, is there anywhere for them to go? So I myself provide those services now, but we are desperately in need of a larger facility. So that is my concern that I put before you, the council, tonight. Felicia Bates. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the council this evening? This time, we'll move into closing comments. Mr. Mayor? Counselor Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Sarnes?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Cables?
Yes, sir. Got a couple things here real quick. I did want to echo the comments the mayor said about the Creekside Concert, the first one, what a great turnout that was for any of you that came down there. It was, I think it's most I've ever seen down there, and it didn't rain, it was great weather, it was perfect. Teresa Lee, thank you so much for all that you've helped me with personally during my time here on the council. I wish you nothing but the best. Also, Hairspray, when's it start, the play? July thirteenth, looking forward to that. If none of y'all have been to these plays yet, that's, what an awesome thing we have here in our town. Well, I didn't even know it existed until a year ago, and it was great. And then the Fourth of July event, again, welcome everybody to come out with that, really looking forward to that this year. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Counselor Stritchett?
Yes, sir. I too like to take this time to sincerely express my gratitude to you, Teresa Lee, and for accepting me and my fellow freshman counselors up here, and for all the help that you've provided, for your patience and your hard-fought dedication for our city, but mostly your passion for this community. It has not gone, it will not be forgotten here, I can assure you that, not by me personally and by many others in this room, and a big thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Thank you. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July the sixth, two thousand and seventeen, at six p.m. in these chambers. Look forward to seeing you then. Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, we are adjourned.